Right on time. Alrighty. Thank you, everybody. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the this is the regular session of the mayor and council of the city of Bisbee County Police State of Arizona being held on April second two thousand twenty-four at seven P M in our council chambers. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill. Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Mel Sweet is not here yet. Mayor Pro Tim Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff, Stephen Pocken, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Matthew Gurney, public works director, Logan Dodd, operations manager, Tim Cox, police chief, Jay Richie, Deputy Police Chief Jim Richardson, fire chief, Melissa Hartman, and Emmanuel Stewart, city planners, Joesta City Attorney.
Thank you. We're trying to have a moment of reflection and then have a pledge of allegiance. I'll get everybody's stand. Thank you. So tonight I have a three things I'd like to address. First one will be a proclamation. I'm proud tonight to read this proclamation and then I'm gonna give a couple of minutes to to the regional director or okay, but we're gonna introduce him. I have your name on this, so I don't have his. So anyways, so tonight it's whereas all of Arizona's children deserve access to quality early care and education environments. And whereas quality childcare programs build children's lifelong learning skills during critical years from birth to age five. And whereas E C T teachers and childcare providers are essential workforce that helps Arizona parents get to work or school. And whereas funding quality childcare is a smart investment that improves family well-being, strengthens communities, and grows our state's prosperity. And whereas First Things First Arizona Association for the Education of Young Children and Other Community Organizations in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children are celebrating their fifty-third anniversary, the week of the young child. And whereas these organizations are working to improve equitable early childhood opportunities that provide a strong start for children in the city of Bisbee. And whereas public policies that support E C E for Arizona's youngest learners help our families, communities, and economy thrive. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Ken Budge, do hereby proclaim April sixth through twelfth, twenty twenty-four as the week of the young child in the city of Bisbee, Arizona, and encouraging all citizens to support and invest in the early care and education of our community. Come on up and say your name tonight.
Mister Mayor, council staff, it's a pleasure. My name is Dimitri Simonatan, and I just wanna thank all of you for this proclamation, especially you, Mister Mayor. I have the privilege of serving as president of the board for the C R V S I D A in a number, in a number of different capacities throughout the state as well. But as I would say, Melissa, my favorite is serving on the First Things First Regional Council. I wanna thank the city of Bisbee. You know, Bisbee has been the heart and the hub for education in Coaches County since our inception. And just looking at the investment that Bisbee is continuing to make, the great work with Copper Queen Hospital, the investments with the New City Law and everything else. I am so excited about the future of Bisbee and how it will continue to lead and be the hub of education in Coaches County. We at First Things First provide quality first education learning centers. We actually have a member of the council who is a, what is it? What is the?
Child health consultant.
A child health consultant, actually, and has done a lot of work throughout Coaches County. So we wanna thank you, and we thank you for your proclamation, and we encourage everyone to continue to invest in the future of Coaches County, probably invest in the future of Bisbee, which are for you. So I'm gonna have my sister and my nieces who joined me this evening come up and take a picture with you, Mister Mayor, and thank you all very much.
So another couple of really quick things. First, have you seen this published? But I thought I should bring it up, that our wonderful Copper Queen Library has again been named a finalist in the two thousand twenty-four National Medal of Museum and Library Services Awards. This National Medal is one of the nation's highest honors given to museums and libraries that demonstrate significant impact in their communities. For thirty years, the award was, has honored institutions that demonstrate excellence in service and in their communities. We've been named as one of the finalists, and it would be unbelievable if we actually take that, but it's a very big honor even to be one of very few of the ones across the entire nation that actually becomes one of the finalists. Jason, our leader of the Copper Queen basically said his nomination is a phenomenal honor for the Copper Queen Library and the citizens of Bisbee. It is also a testament to this all small and rural libraries across the country who work to offer exceptional programs and services for their communities, often with small staffs and limited resources. Our library continues to prosper and grow because of our partners and patrons who inspire us every day to be the best we can. So I, again, that's just one more great thing that we still, that we can do here in Bisbee that that on a smaller scale and budget, but yet run one of the best libraries in the nation. So kudos for that. Lastly, would be a quick update on our mainstream situation and fire that happened there. Today, actually, the front building of twenty-eight Main got braced to the, a big Jersey barrier in the street. Tomorrow, we're gonna be working on the backside to decide what gets brings back there. Our structural engineer is coming down, and we'll be meeting with the structural engineer from twenty-four Main, which is the western lobby, to decide what may be that happened back there. My plan is barring any additional problems with the adjacent buildings, they still have some work to do to get things off their roof in order to lighten their load and so on. But my goal is to open the main street and do away with our horrendous up and over crossing and around on Thursday. So if nothing else comes in our way, we'll have the one down lane, down Main Street on Thursday, and the up lane will still remain on subway. We'll be that way for some time until, until the twenty-four Main gets entirely braced and secured on that corner to make sure nothing else comes down. So I just wanna let, to say one thing is, this has been quite a slog for our city staff, our employees and elected officials, but nothing compared to our businesses and the public that have put up with this for almost seven weeks. And I'm just gonna say I'm very proud of my citizens that have taken this in heart and supported us through this. And I'm, you know, really, the kudos go to, to this, to this community that will actually, that's actually rallying behind us and realize that we're doing all we can as a small town and moving forward in a safe and, and, and ethical manner to try to make things back as best as we can. And I'm hoping by Thursday, you will hardly know that, except for one light's missing, that it will be back. We got the sidewalk open for Easter. That was important. So again, these are baby steps, and I think come Thursday, barring any additional situations with any of the adjoining buildings, we'll have about as much as we can. I will say that we're still gonna have some conditions on Commerce Street for some time. We've got investigation going on back there, some removal and stabilization of some other things at the rear. So we can live without Commerce for a couple more weeks before I can open that up. And but the plan is eventually that will be open also, and we'll recapture those parking places behind the post office. So but we're still gonna have to work with that for a while, because the most important thing now is to make sure we get an investigation done and, and other things that need to happen. So that's where we are, and thank you all for understanding as we flog through this. And, and I'm just glad all the businesses are now that are able to be open, are open. Unfortunately, a couple, three of them actually took the big hit, and, and were not able, actually four when you consider the tank gallery. So, you know, that's, that is the collateral on problems of, of having these types of fires. Just let you know, we, we, we are continuing our grant process to try to, to acquire new firefighting equipment and for our firefighters and engines and ladders and everything. Lot of people have reached out to me, a lot of congressmen, senators, even the governor. We had a meeting with them the other day, asking what they can do. And I'm giving them lots of ideas to help us. So I'm not afraid to ask for help. So they're being told this is what we can help, help us with. And so we'll see how that works out. But yeah, it's not from lack of trying, not from lack of asking. I'm not too proud not to ask. So that's where we are, and I'm gonna, with that, end up with my announcements. Thank you all. We have nothing to call the public, right?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll move on to general business. So first order of general business, of course, is accounts payable. Motion?
I approve that we pay accounts payable in the amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-one cents, subject to availability of funds.
Second?
We have a motion, a second, to approve accounts payable. Questions, please?
Maybe some explanation on page three, professional fees. Exactly, 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 why is so many different payments? They are around four thousand, four thousand, different period?
It looks like they had changed their billing service, and they had missed billing for a couple of months, so we went back and checked and compared, and those were the misses on their end.
Yeah, it was too many.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? Seeing none. We have a motion with second to pay accounts payable in the amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-one cents. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those nay. Very none, the ayes have. So moved. We'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, items A through G. I'm gonna ask, I pull B and G, just for a couple of questions. So anyone else have, we have one minute, two appointments, one to the disability committee and one to the police and fire. We have a liquor license for Copper City Events on thirty-nineth Page Street for Saturday, April twentieth. And right away, use permit for three parking spaces on Brew Regulch. Again, on April sixth, twenty twenty-four. And then D and E, G, I'm gonna just ask a couple of questions on it. Anybody else have any to pull?
I wanted D, E, and G.
Well, we'll include E on that. So I'll take a motion for items A through C and F, yes?
I approve the consent agenda, items A through C and F. Second?
We have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda, items A, B, C, and F. All those who take it, favor, signify by saying aye. Those nay. Very none, the ayes have. So first one to consider here is item D. This is the approval, an update of standard operation procedures for the Bisbee Fire Department. That gets April second, twenty twenty-four. Reading over these, just a couple of suggestions. One was on page fourteen. I'm sorry, let's start first with item, page eight. This is dispatch change. Under this, the dispatch field listed as, as we have our own dispatched, we're not hundred percent CCOM yet, so that probably should be updated.
So just to clarify on that, I spoke to Joe Well about this a couple of days ago.
Yeah.
When I wrote the SOPs originally, that part had changed about three times. And there's a possibility that it's going to change again. So we didn't wanna just continue to make a bunch of changes until it was actually finalized. So we are one hundred percent with CCOM, but in the rest of that language with the dispatch center, the radio channels are also changing. So that's why that, that is still reflecting that.
Okay, so there's, so we could do CCOM a hundred percent of the radio channel.
It's, it's going to change here, hopefully, in the near future, hopefully for the last time.
Yeah, because we don't even have a, have a board anymore. We can't just that out of our, so I, I caught that and wondered what that might be. Okay. You know, the other thing, just for my personal experiences, you can decide. Part of the emergency, part on page fourteen, which has to do with what happens to notify an emergency situation. In my old department, if there was a, a situation, because radios are very, very hard when you call Mayday, Mayday, or you say everybody out of the building. And also, what we did is if the, the engineer was required to hit the air horn on the, on the apparatus three times, three times in a row to, because if you heard that air horn go beep, 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 you know that was time to evacuate. You've been told. That's a, it, it's been used more than once in my department, and sometimes you guys probably have better radios now, maybe in your ears, but in my day, we could already hear our radios with our air pack on. But something to can think about as far as a way to, to notify anyone inside that, that they have to get out immediately if they don't hear it on, on their brain. Just something I, that everything else is fine. I know it's kind of tiki-tacky, but, no, we, we talked about that as well. Now that, you know, we can't use that. It's I mean, you just, you know, down the road, but, but I, I know I was at one time and heard the air horn. I didn't hear the time to evacuate. And, and luckily, we all got out, and the, and the semen kicked in on us, on them, on nothing, thank goodness, about ten minutes later. So yeah, it was, it, the air horn was really loud, and then sometimes you can hear things. So, all right, just something I thought might help save anybody. Outside of that, I have no other issues on this one. Anybody else have any discussions? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so first of all, I wanna say I'm really glad to see this. I think it's really important that we have it. And it's, it lays out clearly, you know, what, what procedures, you know, we need to follow in different circumstances. So I really appreciate that. And I'm really, really happy to see this, and especially with us calling in outside agencies or other agencies to assist. It gives a clear direction on how to deal with them too. And hopefully, that will cut down on a lot of the chaos that, that sometimes does happen. And having said all of that, to me, this is, is such an important document that we're gonna be following for quite some time. I also have the question on, on dispatch. But there, I have pages and pages of typos that, you know, I mean, page two, the second paragraph, last sentence doesn't make any sense, so it, you know, should be cleaned up. Then a question on page four, it talks about our subscription area. And I know we had that. Do we still have a subscription area? And do we have subscribers? How many do we have?
It's Danny Creek area. Last, last year, I think we had ten or eleven. I think we're, around that again.
Oh, good. Good. That's good to know.
And a signed up average.
And then let's see, and then I, page eleven. Let's see. No, page twelve. The primary all clear. The, like, the last sentence should, it says, and no come, it should be not come.
Yeah, we can hear the primary. All errors and errors.
And, okay, and then on page fifteen, under radio code. It should be in compliance with NIMs, not complaints with NIMs. And the second to last sentence on that page should read, has been completed, not Oz. I mean, there's just, and I, I mean, halfway through, and there are tons and tons of these. And because I think it is such an important document, I would really like to see it cleaned up before it's brought back, and brought back to us with the complete you know, with, with all the titles cleared up. And, but there's, let's see, there was one that I thought was let's see, page two. Page two, on the fire ground strategy. The, the three bullet points that you have there, I was really happy to see that in here. Again, I think that's extremely important for the protection of our firefighters. And a lot of people may not understand that, but some of us certainly do. So I'm really happy to, to see that, because I think it's really important to provide a safety. Again, like I said, there's just, I have pages and pages of titles. And I, I really would love to see it cleaned up when it's not back.
So we Well, wouldn't that one clean it up pretty? If you think it's necessary to bring back?
Before, before, you know, before we sign off on. And I would do that with Ashley's men. So it's not, you know, but because I do feel it's a very important document. I would really like to see it cleaned up.
I will take her.
Thank you.
You want like a motion?
I would like to move that we table consent agenda, item B, for errors to be cleaned up and brought back before us.
I'll second that. All those in favors, have a motion and a second to table item D for some cleanup. All those in favors, signify by saying aye. Those nay. Ayes have it, so moved. Thank you. Item A, one you want to fill, it's, so it's probably up to you.
I see that Kami is answering the question. Okay. Okay, on this special event liquor license.
Yes.
Is it to benefit the Boys and Girls Club or?
Yes, so we'll benefit the Boys and Girls Club. We will be donating twenty-five percent of the proceeds, the cost of maybe the entrance fee. We're gonna do a dinner, a family fun, time in the beginning from five to eight. There's gonna be a light dinner, like a high tea dinner, light sandwiches, and like movie snacks. Just I'm hoping, I don't have it locked down yet, but it's real close. The Bisbee High School dorm team come in and do like the cosplay, so garments for like out, house and busy lane. And so really get like the families to come in and, and support. So really, what I recently opened up is Copper City Events and Rentals, and what it is, is opening that backup for Bisbee to be an event. So you can have your own celebration, your own birthday party. And me, what I'm doing, I'm doing my own events much of the month just to get it out there. So I want people to be like, oh, I can have my own celebrations here. And so that's why I'm kind of hosting my own. But I do wanna benefit, you know, the Boys and Girls Club, so my high school will benefit. It's gonna be twenty dollar ticket or no ticket. We'll get half of that towards their high school, you know, theater department, things like that.
Okay, so it's was kind of in general and not for anything specific? Just a general support of?
Yeah, just for the Boys and Girls Club, yeah. Because I want it to be a family fun event as well as like from nine on, though, or we want it to be an adult event. So, you know, the family fun part will, you know, close down around eight, and then we'll have an hour cleanup. You know, the space, and then it'll be an adult party for the night.
Okay, so then, how many tickets for this?
So I, I will print out some kind of tickets. I still do advertising, like on Facebook, and doing my, you know, posters and but I'll print out some kind of tickets. I'm looking on that this week. Just got my meeting together and, you know, the schedule of events and things. I'm still printing lockdown for this because dorm team, if not, I will come up with some other family friendly events during that time. Okay, so yeah, anyone else?
Anyone else? Motion?
I approve that we approve
I'll second that.
Have a motion, a second to approve item B on the consent agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both nay. Very none, the ayes have it, so moved. And the last one that I wanted to hold was G, which is a park and facility ride, use, right? Use permit with this, the park, National Night Out on Saturdays. My situation with this is the insurance. What I saw was some insurance at the very back, which was for Pirates, where we're named Pirate Weekend, and it's eight, ten, twenty-four. Doesn't have anything to do with this.
You know what? Like, should there's a policy right before that, I think, right?
Policy, it's just a policy for their particular business. How are we supposed to have one?
It should be named for the event. Just, and I might have missed not attaching the right evidence, then.
So all I'm gonna do is make a motion to approve this with the correct insurance.
I can send that to you all tomorrow.
Yeah, if it shows up, yeah. The one that we normally see, which is the one we're naming on, is not correct. So I didn't wanna prove this without proper insurance. So.
On page four of five at the bottom, it says new insured. And it lists all this will treasure all CCOM, city business. Well, you said you do use name on this. Yeah, this is true.
Oh, yeah, the fine print.
Yeah, it is fine.
Ah, okay.
That guy with the bike was found.
Okay, on four of five, that, okay. All right, that sounds like it.
I had one question.
Sure.
Why the request for waiver fees?
I do not know. It was just part of the, I don't know if it's because she's doing that in conjunction with National Night Out. I'm not sure. I don't know.
And the fee total is what?
It's just the regular park permit fee, so, yeah, plus the electric, so another twenty-five for that.
Anybody have a feeling on waiver fees?
That's the name, that's what she's doing it under or with, she's.
I think you should let it, yeah.
See, see how I always pass.
But that's where the fees. Okay, I moved to approve the park facility and right away use permit for the user. This is the park for National Night Out on Saturday, April twentieth, from three P M to seven thirty. Alma Hitman, Miracles, Second Chance Avenue, with, out. Waving without, with, with a fee waiver.
Real motion, second to approve item G is shown on the consent agenda, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, opposed nay. Wow, we got through the consent agenda, only twenty minutes. All right, thank you, everybody. Back to all business, this will be a couple of things we have to. To finish up these, this is discussion of possible approval of ordinance O dash twenty-four thirteen. It's repealing ordinance O dash nine thirteen and abolishing the Streets of Infrastructure Committee. Amendment to zoning code, Article Two, Official Boards and Commissions, Section Two, Boarding Trees, Tying and Zoning. Basically, I brought this before you, because as we discussed last time, that the Streets of Infrastructure is pretty well completed its duties. Way back in the late, and that from now on, if there's some thing that comes up in particular to, to that type of an issue. We build a plan, zoning could easily deal with it, they need every month versus once every three months. So I'm just trying to say, a little bit of work for our staff and moving forward. Anybody have a discussion on this? Discuss that less though. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve item three, discussion of possible approval ordinance O dash twenty-four thirteen. And repeal, repealing ordinance O dash O nine O three. And abolishing the Streets of Infrastructure Committee as shown on our agenda.
A second.
We have a motion, a second to approve item three as shown on our agenda, all those, oh, sorry, gotta have a vote. See, moving on.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Soweet. Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, you can pass this six zero. Moving forward, this is another ordinance to approve ordinance O dash twenty-four fourteen. This is amended city code by repealing Chapter Seven, Building, Article seven point one four Boards of Appeals. And replacement with a new Article seven point one four entitled Building Advisory Board of Appeals. Providing for repeals conflicting ordinances. Again, we discussed this, would you like an explanation from our building official?
I think we covered pretty much the last.
See, tell me. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is easier than consent agenda. I'll take a motion on this one, my voice is sort of.
Okay, my voice too. I move to approve ordinance O dash twenty-four dash fourteen, amended to city code by repealing Chapter Seven, Building. Article seven, one fourteen Board of Appeal, replacing with a new Article seven point fourteen entitled. Building Advisory Board of Appeals, providing for the appeal conflicting ordinances. Providing perseverance and providing effective dividends.
Second.
And a motion, a second, to approve ordinance O dash twenty-four fourteen, amended to city code. And refilling Chapter Seven of the Building Article seven point one four, as shown on our agenda, item four.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Soweet.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, we should pass this six zero, so move.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson.
Thank you. All right, moving on, item five, last of the whole business, this is discussion of possible approval of ordinance O dash twenty-four fifteen. It's accepting the transfer of real property from Southeast Arizona. A reservation for, LLC located at one 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 East Street, Disney. Basically, this is one of our workforce houses.
It is, we talked about it at the last meeting, this is the second reading of this one.
Yeah.
It's a three bedroom, two bath.
Any questions on moving forward on this one? Motion?
I move to approve ordinance zero dash twenty-four dash fifteen, accepting the transfer of real property. Southeast Arizona Renovations LLC, located at one eleven East Street, Disney.
Second, and a motion, second to approve ordinance O dash twenty-four fifteen, as shown in item five on our agenda. Call.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Soweet.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, we should pass it six zero. Thank you. Moving on to new business, I have a few things here, first of all, be a presentation of the Annual Designer Review Board Report. Turn that over to you, and you can turn it over.
I would like to introduce more again now, I was the chairperson, the designer review boys, been doing a great job there.
Well, thank you. Mayor Budge and members of the council, and senior manager, city attorney. Okay, so I have sort of a bulleted list here, so that I'm giving you top line and not reading through the whole thing. You all, we will have a copy of this, correct? Okay, so the design review board has seven appointed members in conjunction with councilman Frank Davis. And building inspectors, Joe Ward retired, and now Javier Rodriguez, and I want to say thank you to. Everybody that meets once a month on Wednesday at five thirty in this office to do so. Yeah, so we've had in the past year twelve regular meetings and one special meeting in twenty twenty-three. We reviewed and considered sixty-one applications, which was up from fifty-five in twenty twenty-two. So it was a kind of a little bit busier year for us. Yeah, all of our applications passed, twenty-three of those with contingencies and conditions. Right, so we're, we're, we're not as bad as people think we are. We just sometimes have to, your neck feed changes to the application. So of those applications, thirty-three were residential and twelve commercial contributing structures. We had a photovoltaic solar panels are on the rise, more and more people are doing those. We had eight applications up from three in twenty twenty-two, so that's pretty significant increase. And we consider that that's probably gonna keep going up. So many splits and heat pumps are replacing gas furnace and evaporative coolers. Technology is creeping its way into Visby, and we support that, but we just want to make sure that it's not. Really uglifying our beautiful historic district. So we are always considering where things are placed, you know, so that it's least intrusive. Okay, there was one new building, a little minor shop type house on Adams, that was approved. And our biggest item, which will surprise no one, was the old Visby High School, which came to us for two sessions. And then the project was subsequent, subsequently canceled, so is now sort of just in and about. So at the back of the, of the annual report, we'll find an appendix that has all of the applications for the year. In case you want to look anything up, there's a total of a hundred and thirty-two, up from ninety-six and twenty twenty-two, so. Pretty, pretty significant increase, and over half were administratively approved by the building inspector. Being able to review applications in advance, and now NINA sends us applications in advance. And we're able to review them and ask questions, and that has saved an considerable amount of time for us, so we really go NINA, we appreciate that. We also have developed a series of special working sessions. Around reevaluating development standards pertaining to windows, doors, and materials, specifically siding. This is to improve consistency in the approval process. We don't want people coming in saying, well, you said it was okay for them, and now you're saying it's not okay for me, so we're trying to standardize some of that. To ensure that the historic integrity of our town remains intact, that is our number one goal. And as regular participants in the DRB, we've said goodbye to Joe Ward, who retired as building inspector, and hello to Javier Rodriguez. Who was awesome. And then also, NINA Williams is no longer attending our regular meetings, and instead, we have Emmanuel Stewart. And he's also awesome. So those are the highlights of the report. Does anybody have any questions for me? Okay.
Say no, thank you. Good job, we appreciate it. I think we're still considered by the state as one of the jewels in, in Arizona as far as.
That's for sure.
I'd just like to say the board works very hard, it's, it's a long work, and they're dedicating to it people.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
If I could, just comment, looking at the appendix at the back of the report. It, it's plainly obvious to me, since on and off, I've been here now about eighteen years. Basically, you weren't on it back when I first came back, it was a sleepy little committee, didn't do a whole lot. There were a whole lot of applications, not a lot happened. You know, what you're doing now is, quite frankly, pretty awesome for a level of your organization.
Yeah, and it's really picked up steam in the past year and a half, I'd say, yeah.
It's a sign of health in the community, but it's also a testimony to the members of the board. The seriousness with which you take the work.
Well, thank you, I would pass that on.
And I think that's showing around your historic history pretty well.
Thank you.
You just need to have the reply.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you, moving on to new business, item seven, this is the public hearing discussion for possible approval to move forward. On creating additional overlay zones. And the Visby zoning code, Article Five, Pacific Land Zoning. Yep, you're up.
What this is all about, that's, yeah, the packet there, and now could we have a PowerPoint presentation? So several months ago, the planning and zoning commission was tasked with finding a way to encourage affordable housing in Visby. And we, this is some of different ideas, and they concluded that overlay zones would help. Creation of affordable housing. So I want to just spend some time presenting our findings that we brought over. Recommendation regarding implementation of these overlays, given your information. We spent a lot of research, time researching and deliberation with the planning and zoning commission. And we've identified specific areas within the city where these overlay zones could particularly be beneficial. And they align cities' goals for affordable housing while also ensuring responsible development and community engagements. We appreciate the opportunity to share our proposal with you tonight, and wish to work collaboratively. To come up with creative solutions for our housing priorities. So you can see in this image here on the screen, these are some ideas of potentially what can be possible in the neighborhood as a duplex in all of Visby. A manufactured home, and then that's just a sort of photo of small houses in all of Visby. So our goal is to be proactive with expanding affordable housing options. For individuals and to address the changing needs that we have, while ensuring that we maintain the development, design, and safety standards. For Visby's growth areas and carry out the policy goals outlined in the general plan. So the overlay zones that we were looking into. Implementing would be the infill residential, IR, which is called overlay. So this would be a residential development zone, intended to enhance the health, safety, and welfare. And encourage and facilitate the building of affordable housing for the city of Visby. And it will be superimposed over other zones, and we will have regulations and restrictions, but a bit of an expansion of uses. The mixed-use commercial and infill overlay zone would be more for commercial areas that already exist. Residential, it would allow residential and commercial development, and it would enhance the health, safety, and welfare, encourage and facilitate. The building of affordable housing in Visby as well. This overlay would be superimposed over the other zones. So, so in areas that we identified, some key areas were, you can see the green is infill residential, that's. Just residential and the mixed use, the mixed use would be down Naco Highway and along State Route ninety-two. These areas are not very big, I mean, they're really maybe about a block wide. In some areas, a couple of blocks here and there, along off of the State Route and off of Naco Highway. On the right, it's Naco Highway further down south, it would be along there about a block in, and then also. You can put it down to the next slide. And then we would have it extend along State Route ninety-two all the way out, to the west end of town, and then we'd include Sierra Cobra area. City of Visby current zone. Then we would go to Bakerville. And it would just be a couple of blocks in, kind of taking advantage of the current commercial zoning that's, you know, it's a long busy road. And some of the residential, that's right by the busy road as well, and then that's the next one. And then Saginaw, we would have some residential infill there. And, that's the next one. So essentially, what we want to do is to start the process of. Working with the community and coming up with, you know, workable methods to address these related things, to create them. This was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, so I've run this by them several times. At the regular session, they put it on it with unanimous votes in the last session. So there would be targeted regulations, restrictions, and development each overlay zone. And this really is about encouraging innovation, flexibility, and using community engagement in the process. To address the lack of affordable housing. So I would encourage alternative, additional affordable housing. And also really we're focusing on preserving the character of the area. And we don't expect it to increase or decrease property lot, it's just gonna be some changes. It reflects our general plan goals, and it will be a part, a component of our general plan update, that's we're in the process of doing right now. And we want to start with just these initial areas, and if it's successful, move to expand them. So, thank you.
All right, I'll open this up to the public, and anybody has comments that I'd like to come up and speak to? Seeing none, I'll open the council for. You want to do the formal hearing?
Well, open the hearing, opposing hearing.
Okay. Open a public hearing on the possible move to create additional overlay zones in the. City of Visby zoning code, Article Five. Anyone here would like to speak in favor of this? Would anyone like to speak against this? Were you, had any communications with the public?
No, sir.
Seeing none, I'll close the public here. I'll open it up now for comment from council.
Well, I'd just say anything we can do to increase affordable housing is, is a good direction to go in. I, I think just when Emmanuel was presented, it looks good, it looks hilarious, like they're, they're workable.
So, just to give you a little background, and I'll let Melissa speak too, because I'm kind of the semi lobbyist for us at the State Capitol. They passed one that was a horrible zoning situation, they're trying to tell us how we can do our local zoning, luckily the, the. Governor vetoed that one, we are supporting another one that, that leaves us some control like this. So to me, this is showing them that, listen, we as locally can determine what is best for our community and what area. And why I supported looking at this early on when I talked to them about overlay zones. It doesn't hodgepodge us into little tiny twenty-five different zones, but we actually have the same zone. We just put something over it, much like the historic district, there's an overlay zone over that, that, that. It makes certain conditions, so we haven't, you know, this is not done yet, this is just letting things come forward. So that it can go back to PNC and actually drill down on each one of the areas and see. Melissa, go ahead, do you have a minute or something?
Sure, sure. First of all, I wanted to say that this is just one of a few things that you're gonna see brought before. Sure, sure. Um, first of all, I want to say that this is just one of a few things that you're going to see brought before you. That we need to do as a community to, uh, create more affordable housing. You all know that we're left in the dust from the state legislature. So we've been accumulating information from other smaller communities. This is our first step with the overlay zones. They were very specifically mapped out in areas that would be the most conducive to doing maybe a smaller lot split. So that they would not increase or decrease anyone's property value. I, as I stepped through the process with E and the committee, um, I learned how valuable it is for us to have something like this in place. As one more tool in our toolbox for affordable housing. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I just want to say it's really exciting to see you guys working together on this and, and moving forward, uh, because we all know it's, it's so new here. Um, so I really appreciate that. I'm sure everybody else on the council does. Um, quick question, did you go take a look at the San Jose Charette that was done years ago?
Yes, in fact, we, in fact, we did. You did. And I actually went.
Really?
Yes.
That's cool.
And with John Charlie.
Oh, okay. That was, that was a few years ago.
Yes.
We're a couple of years old.
Yes. He was there too.
Yeah, I was. Yeah, I, I sit on, I'm, I'm the, yes, I am for the planning and zoning. And I just want to compliment Emmanuel and Melissa. Actually, when we sit through those meetings, they are very thorough. I mean, you look at all the options, they wanted to make sure and, uh, they worked very hard on this, so I.
Thank you.
And, um, we've gone through all the options. We made sure that this will not hurt the values of properties. We, we have to work with all the options and they are, they are doing a good job. So just want to compliment them.
And basically what the committee really wanted and was ready for it to move forward with you so that we can continue and complete it. And thank you.
Don't need, spend a lot of work. We're just going to jump.
Right.
There you go.
You're putting good.
Well, my last comment is, is, yeah, I, I attended one of the Board of Justice meetings where unfortunately we couldn't allow
Right.
a, a tiny home over in Saginaw. And I mean, it really pored us up that our zoning codes are, were so restrictive. So that's actually, I asked at that point that we move forward. You guys, everybody was on board with it. Of course, we're all looking at it, but now formally, it's very exciting to be this far. So.
So just a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And, uh, some of this is, you know, acquired, um, experience from here as well as acquired experience from other communities. Uh, where I've worked over the years and, uh, you know, um, first of all, uh, I'll remind members of council who are here, when I was, uh, asked to come back to work three years ago, uh, that I specifically asked you to hire a planner. Um, and not necessarily, it's a condition to my return, but highly appropriate that we do that. I'm there. Um, you, you gave us the opportunity to do that, not having had a planner on staff in a good number of years. And, uh, which take back to the first time they were here. So it was a considerable amount of time. Um, I think you can see that there's some logic here, uh, to what we're doing. Um, one thing that we also encountered, um, about four years ago was, um, you know, facing down what we call the housing crisis, which I call the housing system. Um, nothing's a crisis unless it catches on fire in my view, but, uh, but, but it does minimize the seriousness of the situation that we find ourselves in. Um, because, um, I had seen different types of housing than we currently allow. Uh, being done successfully in other communities, not around Arizona, but around, around the country. Um, we, uh, used that opportunity to huddle, uh, and decide that we have to be a lot more progressive than we have. Quite frankly, the way our, like, co-exist today, you don't allow a lot of things that are successful affordable housing projects now. Uh, literally, the, the, the only thing we have at our disposal right now is the workforce housing program, which as you all know, is a lot of time, a lot of, a lot of effort and, and, and can't be done fast enough to meet the demand. Um, and the Hillcrest project, which, you know, hopefully we're thundered back out on the market here pretty soon. So, so we needed, you know, the opportunity to do tiny homes, which we don't allow right now. Uh, a lot of, um, manufactured housing that's out there readily available, uh, is, we don't allow. Uh, so I call it getting progressive. I don't know if it's actually progressive in the greater world, but it certainly is for us. And since historically, and for the twenty or so years I can recall, um, we have been an infill community and not an expanding community. And we have some small opportunities where we can grow with new housing in subdivision format, one of which we happen to own. Um, the, uh, the reality is, is that almost everything that has occurred in the last twenty years has been using infill. Okay? Um, the census data that we have from twenty twenty tells us that there are hundreds of unoccupied residential structures in Visby. We can drive around, we can find a lot of them, okay? Um, some are easier to handle than others, some are more available than others. Um, but it's, it's a golden opportunity. We've been trying to take advantage at the reach that possible. What's being proposed here will offer us an opportunity to expand our opportunities for, um, housing in the affordable range, uh, that we don't currently have. And I think over the next five years or so, it's going to prove that a lot more folks who want, who want to both live and work in Visby will be given an opportunity to do so. Right now, those opportunities come up one at a time. And it's excruciatingly slow. This will accelerate that process in a very short period of time. Uh, and, uh, you know, I, my, my heart goes out every time if I talk to somebody who may be working in the tourism area in Old Bisbee, just can't find a place to live, or if they do, they're bumping with three other people. In a, you know, eighteen hundred dollar, uh, no problem. So, um, so we know there's a need, we're addressing the need. Um, this is innovative for us. Uh, I think it's something that we can, we can, uh, look forward, uh, in the next two or three or four years and say we, we've made a huge difference in availability of affordable housing for the keyfold of our community.
Hey. Anyone else? Discussion only, so ask that you take on back to PNC and drill it down and let's, let's get her done. Thank you so much.
You can actually do a motion if you want.
Thank you.
Discussion and possible approvals. What would you like to approve?
To approve moving forward, yeah?
All right, I make a motion and we move forward on the overlay zones for the Visby zoning code, Article Five. Motion, a second, to approve moving forward with the overlay zones in the Visby zoning code. All those in favor? Somebody was saying aye.
Aye.
Close any? So moved. Thank you. All right. All right. This is a discussion of possible approval of the acceptance of the resignation of Councilmember Joey Jacomino and a discussion on scheduling to fill his vacancy. Her vacancy, sorry. Can't see him later. It says do, I hate to. All right, um, so the letters run out for applications from, we've received three so far. And, uh, I set April sixteenth, that's our next council meeting, two weeks from today. Um, I can't tell you exactly, I was thinking six, but if we get three, I might have to push it down to five thirty.
Just to be safe.
Let you get, let everybody know, but, uh, when we, when we get the final number in to apply, see if we get through it and and I think five thirty an hour might be a little bit fast. If we get three and obviously we have four, then we have to start at five thirty. So that's kind of where we are and anybody else talk? Well, you got one, well, that's later on. Any other discussion about? I just want to let it out there that anybody's interested in Ward Two, um, this actually is a very long appointment. An unusual one where actually she designed just before everybody was able to get any of their, um, make work in to actually run. So this will last for almost two and a half years before, before it's up. So it's a very big appointment. So that's, it's not a, not a six month thing until the next election. So keep that in mind. Anybody else? Uh, do we have to make a motion to accept the resignation?
Since I move, then we accept the resignation of Councilmember Joey Jacomino and move that we set a date of six sixteenth of April to appoint a replacement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, approve the resignation for Councilmember Jacomino. And we move to set an appointment date of the sixteenth of April. All those in favor? Somebody by the saying aye.
Aye.
Close name. With the down the eyes have it, so moved. All right, we'll move on to item nine. This is a discussion of possible approval to enter into a service agreement with Ripple Industries LLC to upgrade and blow communal gauge lift station. Ripple? I brought that whole back.
Not, not a clean break. Uh, great, great, and counsel. Um, Emmanuel and them brought some good things and some bad things, and this is not so clean. So, um, this is, um, coming to you, uh, tonight to, uh, enter a service agreement with Ripple Industries, uh, to upgrade the Neil Gold's lift station. I'm sorry, I've been sick all weekend, so my throat is a little out there. Uh, so our lift station, Neil Gold's Lift Station, it's our largest lift station, uh, which used to be also our old wastewater plant off of Highway eighty. Uh, we had, um, uh, service panel went down on that, uh, recently. Uh, we've had Ripple come out, uh, to look at it, see if we could, uh, make some changes and fixes. And, um, it's been there since two thousand and six, which like a lot of our stuff, there's, everybody's saying it's passed its useful life. Um, so this price, uh, fifteen thousand seven hundred and five is to replace uh, and upgrade the control system. Um. It's, right, currently it's in manual operation to where it, it shut with it in manual operation. It shut one pump down. Um, so we're running on one pump right now. We have two in the hole, whatnot, but only one pump is working, uh, in the state that it's in. So, uh, this, these upgrades would allow us to, there's nothing wrong with that pump. It's just an electronic system that's not allowing that to turn on. Um, so the proposal includes providing equipment and materials, programming and upgraded control system and, uh, construction of communication system or a small type of SCADA system, uh, to, to communicate, uh, with um, our guys, our collection guys out in the field, uh, whoever's on call in the evenings or weekends, uh, they will be able to, uh, there's alarms that come out for a problem. It'll send them notifications, uh, and they can see levels of the pumps of the, of the, and the conditions and everything that's going on there. Um, that's not a extra service agreement for the, for the, um, communication system. The only thing that would be additional is a Verizon LTE, uh, uh, to have the internet there, uh, for that. Um, and they are on the, um, cooperative safe contract with the city of Tucson.
Maybe we just grab it off of jail across the way. Um, the questions? Yeah. I don't really want to get into.
Just one question.
Yes.
Uh, why are we not putting bids for this? Is this, uh, are the only companies can do this? I mean, can you just?
Yeah, uh, the safe, uh, Ripple is with the safe contract and, and so it's a cooperative contract. Uh, and we need to get this done sooner or later.
Do they have, they know, just to maybe clarify a little bit, the safe contract being cooperative, what they do is they bid their services to the city of Tucson on an annual basis. And they compete for entry into the safe agreement with other vendors who do similar work. So the bidding part has already been completed.
Yes.
When they get on the same list and then Matt's able to use that because state law allows municipalities to use cooperative purchasing agreements in this manner.
Yeah, thank you.
So it's already a bit of a base.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That also comes with pricing.
Seeing none, take motions.
I move to approve to enter into a service agreement with Ripple Industries LLC to upgrade the Neil Gold's lift station.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for item nine, which is enter into a service agreement with Ripple Industries for the New Gold's Lift Station. All of the favors, anybody by saying aye.
Aye.
Close name. Feeling on the eyes have it, so moved. Okay, one last item. This is discussion, possible approval to enter into a contract with, uh, the Nona, the Nona.
I couldn't even say that.
I think I better take my seat. It looks like, it looks forward.
I feel like I want to do that.
Anyway, uh, now we got our last one. It's basically copying, right?
Our copy machine, yes. Um, this also is through a cooperative contract through the state of Arizona. Um, so it's already been bid out. Um, we're going to be seeing quite a savings under this. Our monthly base charge currently is a hundred and seventy-three dollars with Xerox. We'll be moving it to fifty-two dollars a month. So it's huge.
Yeah.
And there's also a bit of a savings on the, uh, copy charges. It's a tiny bit, but we'll notice the majority with the monthly base charge. Um, and this does include all toner staples, copy, maintenance, everything.
Yeah. Questions?
I have a question.
So this is just for city hall.
Correct. Not, no, everybody's on rotating contracts. So as soon as they, everybody else become, comes due, we'll get them on the same contract. Yes.
I, I have a question. Why the big difference? Were we all about paying then and now this is?
Wow, that time Xerox was with, had the state of Arizona contract. So this is who they have now. So I don't know.
So that, that's saving for us. Okay. Cause the, the, the price varies, so.
It's huge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? Take a motion on the last.
I move to approve the acceptance agreement with Conca Minolta Fitness Solutions.
Say that three times. We have a motion and a second to approve the Danta, uh, for our copying solutions. All of the voters, anybody by saying aye.
Aye.
Close name. I hear it on the eyes have it. And, and you know, what else shouldn't be there. All right, number eleven. See you, Mary.
Yes, thank you, Mary. Just two quick things. Uh, number one, um, uh, you know, uh, I, I just want to dip my hat, um, to, uh, everybody who's been putting in, uh, essentially a lot of extra duty, uh, the last two months, uh, since the Ash Wednesday fire. Um, the, uh, as you can tell by, uh, Matt's, uh, somewhat congested condition, he's been sick twice since fired. Uh, al- almost all of us have been sick once since the fire. Um, it's, it, it wasn't only, um, a very traumatic and serious event the night it happened, but it's continued to it. Um, you know, dogged, if you will, um, with one thing after another, um, on, on an almost daily basis, including weekends. Um, we're at a, a, a point where I think we're going to be in good shape. Uh, but the hardest work is still in front of us, uh, cause we do have two burned out buildings and one badly damaged by water. Um, the, uh, one of the buildings, you know, building damage by water are insured and uh, those people are actively seeking to, um, Uh, those people are actively seeking to, um, make their, their buildings whole again at some point. Um, but, uh, the, the third one, not so much, but we won't dwell on that tonight, that's a. Discussion probably for another day, however. And so, um, you know, for all of our public safety, all of our public works. Um, our building inspectors, uh, and, uh, and our mayor. He's been downtown more hours than anybody, um, since the night of the fire, uh, and, and it shows. Uh, he, in fact, quite frankly, he's allowed some of the rest of us to handle. Some of the logistical matters that have to be taken care of without having to babysit wrecking crews. And engineers and that sort of thing, so, um, uh, you know, out there today, you know, there, there was a, a bit of a mishap. Uh, over the weekend where some stuff got in, uh, through, uh, a collapse in a second floor. Area that got into a precarious position and, um, so we had a little meeting with the contractor this morning, Joe and. The mayor and I, and, uh, uh, he, he will be making that right at no extra charge and there's a lot of stuff to get out of the way. Before we continue to do what we're doing, and, uh, so, um. I, I think that, uh, I, I, I really can't say enough strongly enough, but I mean, all of you have been a part of this. And, you know, from you guys running up to Phoenix to get the braces on the spur of the moment. Uh, you know, things like that, we pitched in, we more than done. Uh, what we're required to do as a municipality, uh, in an event like this. Uh, we're doing it for one reason, and one reason only, uh, because it has to be done. We have to preserve the public safety, we have to get business and commerce, uh, back to normal. And, um, if, 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 if those two buildings caught on fire on the edge of town. Uh, on, on a five acre parcel, we would have put out the fire left. But this is right at the very heart of our community. And, uh, a lot of these people sitting out here have been putting in a lot of extra time. To make sure that number one, it's safe, and number two, that we get it cleaned up, so number three, we can move forward and start making repairs again, so. Thank you all very much. Um, second item, a bit of a pool update. Um, the, uh, contractor is, uh, busy starting today. Uh, carving, uh, carving's my word. Take, take what you want out of that, um, and, uh, so, uh, over the next week or two. Uh, we'll have everything repaired that we have already identified as a crack in the pool. Uh, even if it's just minor, it's gonna get repaired. Um, now that, that set me back a couple of weeks, I, I have told these guys I wanted it running on. April first, but I can't fault them for the discovery. Uh, that we made, that is basically setting us back a couple of weeks. We do expect late in, um, April to have all that repair done. Uh, of course, we're gonna have to paint the inside of the pool again, and, uh, and then we can fill it with water and we can run the systems. Uh, it looks like we'll have a full month of operation on the pool before we open the business. And so if there's any bugs left, uh, we hope to discover those and, uh, and deal with them before. Are able to reopen the deal to the public, so. Um, I, I notice a good bit of anticipation out there. I get asked by someone for, for more than one person every day. Um, and, uh, it's good to, to be able to give them an answer that brings a smile to their face. Uh, after a long year, but we will, but I will remind you, we will, when we tally it all up. It will be run in excess of two hundred thousand dollars to fix everything that was wrong. And it was about time, it hadn't been done, so, uh, I, I didn't like spending the money any more than anyone else. But I'm glad we did because now I have a lot more confidence in that, so, kind of people will run. So I have to, I had something to the fire. Never had something to a fire. Sorry. We'll throw something on the fire. Uh, I just wanted to mention, I had a conversation with the engineer today, uh, who has substantial experience with regard to. Uh, destruction and buildings and things. He responded to the Oklahoma City bombing. He was an engineer within days to the, uh, nine eleven attacks on, uh, New York. He also went out to Hawaii with fires, uh, on Maui, and he wanted to express how. Amazing was with how the, our fire department handled this and how quickly this fire could have. Just completely destroyed the entire downtown, uh, of Bisbee. He said that there were over two thousand structures. Uh, destroyed, three thousand vehicles destroyed in the Maui fire that just. Took out entire, entire municipalities, and how this fire was contained to two structures. You know, a lot of that was, the fire department, some of it was with blessings, with luck and, and, and weather. He wanted to express that through his fifty years of experience, how much, uh, he saw that the. City of Bisbee was saved because of the efforts of the hard fun.
Can I add something to this? I mean, we just on the fire, yeah, it's not, it's, it's a customer. Like I just said, I heard this from, uh, some people that came from Douglas that helped us. And truly said that, he said, the job the fire department had was advancing to continue the fire. Uh, just in addition to what I just said.
I want, I want people to understand one very important factor. Uh, there's still a lot of people out there that are saying, well, you know, once that truck arrived from Douglas, then they put the fire out. That's the. If they had contained that fire to those two buildings before Douglas showed up. We would have had a hell of a lot bigger mess, and so, and these guys were controlling, okay? They were able to dump the water from on the hot, to snuff out the can, but keeping it from spreading was. And now I'm finished, with help from Joe and.
Yeah, he'd say something nice most of the time.
He's done for the year.
Yeah, that's it.
You're starting a trend.
I'd just like to thank Councilmember Giacomo for all the years of service. I didn't realize that the last meeting was her last meeting. I thought we were gonna have her through April. So I hadn't, you know, prepared anything then, um, but, you know, I think Leslie hit every. Nail that, that she possibly could, and she is correct. Joanie was never afraid to ask a hard question. Um, or unpopular questions and get everybody's tackles up. But, um, but her, her service to the city wasn't just as a council member. I mean, she was an employee for many years and managed our city pool for years and years and years. And, um, certified and qualified are, are lifeguards. And, um, you know, so her, her community service is, is pretty extensive. As a teacher, as a coach, as a mentor, I mean, we could go on, um, with, with all the things that, that she's done for her community. Uh, because she loves her community and, and everybody in it, and so she has contributed a lot. To this community, um, whether it's for fundraisers or you name it. She's there catching in, bringing in food or cakes or whatever she needs to, to help out. And, you know, she will continue to do that, and that's great, and I just. Well, I'm gonna miss her on the council, but we're still gonna see, you know. Friendship that has been lifelong does not end, so, um, but I'm gonna miss her up here. And I really wanna wish her all the best in her next endeavor because it's not gonna be an easy one either, but I know she'll do well.
Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll just second adjourn all in favor, so probably say aye.